I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October 27th, 2020. This is a Prescott City Council voting session. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here today. Mayor Protem, any introductions or announcements? I think we have a special person.
We have a very special guest with us today, Mayor Merlin Kirkendall. Mayor, it's good to have you with us.
Thank you.
You look awesome. And my second announcement is to remind everyone to vote. So now I can take this off because I can speak. But it is important. A week from today is Election Day, so please remind, make sure that you go and you cast your ballot. And next, I would like to also talk about November the 11th. It's Veterans Day. We will have a Veterans Day Parade. And we think the only Veterans Day Parade in the state that we know about at this point. So important that we get out there and we celebrate our veterans. And finally, I want to just commend our staff. Michael Lamar, Chief Black, Chief Light. It was amazing what, how we all conducted and facilitated that rally last week. It was a lot of people, I think 18,000 to 20,000 people, that came in our city. I was so proud of the city of Prescott. It was amazing to have the President of the United States visit us, but also to see how we conducted ourselves and took care of everybody. So, Michael, thank you for that. And to our chiefs, we thank you as well.
Well, Mayor Protem, I'll take the thank you, but I miss most of the coordination. Shucks, I was out of town. But I wanted to also dovetail what you said. Everybody did yeoman's work that was here, so thank you.
It was, just, just so proud. And I had so many people across the country that said some things about Prescott and, you know, complimented our city, so we did well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Today, we have an invocation by the Reverend Jesse Burke with First Church of Founding Fathers Collective and Pledge of Allegiance led.
What time does service start?
Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Blair.
Right after I get done.
That's right. Wherever two or more gathered, there we are.
There we go.
Let us pray. Father, we gather here today, and we do want to thank you and acknowledge the many gifts and blessings in our lives. We thank you for this town. We thank you for this country. We thank you for the freedoms. We thank you for the health that we have and the opportunity that we have to even gather in a place like this. And so, we acknowledge your many blessings on us, and we thank you for them. And, Lord, we also continue to ask for your blessings and grace. We know that this is an important week in our nation as we go and we vote, and we trust and we believe in your sovereign grace, and we know that you establish governments and that you place leaders in their place to rule us and to guide us and protect us. And so, we thank you for that gift to us. And as we go and exercise, Lord, we ask for your grace for this country and for this people and for this time that you give us the leaders that we deserve, that you give us the direction and the guidance that will bring us closer to each other and that we can bless each other, that we can bless the world through who we become, and then also ultimately grow, pull us closer to you. So, Lord, we ask for your blessing. We ask for your grace. We ask for your sovereign hand over these next weeks as we go through this election process and entrust the leadership that you bring us and that they will bring us closer to each other, bring us closer to your kingdom and closer to you. And, Lord, we pray that over this council here today. We know that you've placed them here. And so, we pray your hand of blessing on them. We pray for wisdom for them, for guidance, for grace on their hearts. We pray for peace and patience as they deal with the ever-hard task of serving a populace and doing what's right for them in their leadership position. So, Lord, we offer you these proceedings today. We ask that you be present in them, that you give grace, that you give peace, that you give wisdom to the council here today and all the things that they address. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jesse. Thanks for coming last minute, and congratulations on your new venture. All right, let's please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
All right, let's move on to proclamations.
Patient Blood Management Awareness Week.
Many representatives from the Yavapai Regional Medical Center. How are you, doc?
Good.
How are you? Great to see you. Come down here with the Osens and the Peas here. Please, stand right here.
This microphone buddy.
This proclamation is for Patient Blood Management Awareness Week. Whereas, the city of Prescott is pleased to join Yavapai Regional Medical Center, located in our city, as it celebrates Patient Blood Management Awareness Week, November 2nd through 6th, 2020. And whereas, Yavapai Regional Medical Center is staffed by professionals with a commitment to improving patient outcomes through optimal blood management. And whereas, patient blood management is the appropriate provision and use of blood, its components and derivatives and strategies to reduce or avoid the need for a blood transfusion. And whereas, Patient Blood Management Awareness Week speaks to the concerns of every person to have the best health care available to them, respecting individual preferences and beliefs, and continuing education of health care professionals to provide that care. And whereas, Yavapai Regional Medical Center is staffed by professionals with a commitment to improving patient outcomes and educating the medical community about best practices in blood management. Right, doc?
Right.
Right. And whereas, we commend the members of the Yavapai Regional Medical Center for extending themselves in service to others according to their commitment of improving patient outcomes. Now, therefore, Greg Mangarelli, Mayor of the city of Prescott, does hereby proclaim November 2nd through November 6th of 2020 as Patient Blood Management Awareness Week. Dr. Tippie, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Microphone.
Mayor, council members, I want to say thank you very much. You've done this for many years running. The James Family Heart Center, Yavapai Regional Medical Center, has been a bastion for patient blood management, whether you know it or not. We are one of about 30 hospitals around the country that have a true patient blood management program under the direction of Beth Black and Dale Black. And probably, I would say, I wouldn't be, I would not be overestimating to say that this hospital has one of the lowest utilizations of blood of any hospitals in the country. And that's important because blood, decreasing the usage of blood not only improves outcomes, but it saves a very useful resource. And I can tell you that when I go to my medical meetings, they all look upon this program and say, "How do you do that?" And that's because we have a very united program when it comes to patient blood management, as well as the hospital's administration and especially the city's ability and desire to proclaim our blood awareness week and make this a well-known fact. So, in conclusion, I can't thank you all enough. It really is a part of YRMC becoming a destination program for all of northern Arizona, not only in heart care, but in many other situations such as patient blood management. So, and we have many more things to come, which you'll be hearing about in the near future. But once again, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your work.
Thank you, doc. Before we move on, we've got one other quick announcement. Mayor Protem had.
I don't know how I ever missed this. I look at our airport folks back there in the back row, Robin and Jeff and Kristi. What a great job you did at the rally, organizing all that. It was fantastic. And we were also named the Arizona's Airport of the Year. And what a, what a great honor that was. And it's all because of your hard work. So, thank you so very much.
Mayor, may I make a mention?
A what?
A mention of an issue.
Oh, yeah.
Several of us here at the council were at the dedication of the new Charlotte Hall Education Museum building last Thursday. And I'd be remiss if we didn't recognize the fact that today is the 150th birthday of Charlotte Hall.
Oh, nice.
So, she was born October 22nd, 1870. So, congratulations to our community for that great museum and the dedicated historian founder that it's named after.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, let's move on to presentations.
Freedom Award presentation.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for having me today. Today, I'm truly honored to be here to present the city of Prescott's Fire Department with the 2020 Secretary of Defense Employer Support Freedom Award. I am Dan Irving. I am the Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve State Chair. I'm presenting today the award on behalf of the Honorable Mark Epsper, the Secretary of Defense, and our National Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Chairman, Ron Bogle. The Secretary of Defense Employer Support Freedom Award was instituted in 1996 and is the highest recognition given by the United States government to employers for their outstanding support to their employers who serve in the National Guard or Reserve. The city of Prescott joins a group of 295 recipients, including Chevron Oil, Walt Disney Company, Amazon, Arizona Public Service, TriCareWell, TriWest Healthcare Alliance, and Salt River Project. The city of Prescott has a large number of veterans currently working for the city, and eight who are honorably serving in the National Guard and Reserve. They have been nominated for this prestigious award yearly since 2009 and were recognized as one of the top 30 finalists in 2013 and 2014. Prescott Fire Department Chief Dennis Light, being a retired Air Force officer, brings years of experience not only in military service, but also in professional leadership skills. We have seen firsthand that Chief Light is truly respected not only by the men and women in his department, but across the community and throughout the state of Arizona. Our northern Arizona volunteers have also witnessed city of Prescott's Human Resource Director, like Melissa Falsick, I apologize for the name, working with local recruiters and veterans, organizing and encouraging them to send applicants to the city of Prescott Human Resource Team. Prescott should be proud to have so many Guard and Reserve and veterans serving in their police, fire, and city departments. I can assure you that the city of Prescott and Prescott Fire Department efforts and policies go above and beyond in their support for the Guard and Reserve and veterans. They are dedicated and committed in the taking and take, taking pride, great pride in providing outstanding pay, benefits, support, and outstanding professional care of their employers, employees, serving in the Guard and the Reserve. This nomination had, had input from many Guard and Reserve who work within the city of Prescott. These nominators include Sergeant Lance Mills, Arizona Army National Guard; Sergeant First Class Mark Johnson, Arizona Army National Guard; Lieutenant Colonel John Palladini, Arizona Army National Guard; and Master Sergeant Mark Park, Parker, Air Force Reserve. Throughout the entire Freedom Award process, the selection committee worked to, worked, sorry. The selection committee talked to the nominators and the city of Prescott staff. Chief Dennis Light and Melissa Falsick gathered additional information and spent countless hours throughout the entire process to ensure that the nomination was accurately written. The Prescott Fire Department has placed a priority in making sure that the families of these valued employees are taken care of, not only during deployments and training exercises, but also throughout their entire dual career as citizen warriors. It is an honor to be able to present the city of Prescott and the Prescott Fire Department the 2020 Secretary of Defense Employer Support Freedom Award for Public Sector. Today, I'd like to invite my guest, Merlin Kirkendall, which is your former, one of your former mayors, and also a former northern Arizona Chair for ESGR. So, he's done that as well. I'd like him to come up and help with the presentation.
Come on, Merlin. I know you want to say a few words.
He better.
I love the new, "I should have had this."
That would have been easier, Mayor.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Great to see you.
What an honor to be over on this side and just being a part of a community that is doing so much. And I spoke to George a little bit earlier, and I don't know how they're doing it. In my few years here, while they were always wanting more people, we didn't have any business. George, what's going on? But again, thanks, thanks so much. The, on October 6th, 1956, I boarded a bus in Phoenix, Arizona to go on a extended active duty. I was a member of the National Guard from about '54 and had an opportunity to go on active duty for a few years, and very similar to this program, except we didn't know we had a program at that time. Came back home in '58, went back on the National Guard. Sixty, maybe, was promoted to be the commanding officer of the Prescott unit of the Arizona National Guard. And Steve was around. And lots of others, but a lot of others have departed, which I'll mention in just a minute. The, but in those days, there was a much closer relationship that I would love to see come back together, Mayor, between the Guard units and the communities that they served. And our mission in 1961, '62, '63 was to, in the event of a emergency of almost any kind, I would mobilize our unit and we would move to Goldwater Lake and provide security for the water source of Prescott, Arizona, which was Goldwater Lake to a large extent. And that was the Guard's unit's responsibility in case of an emergency. I made a couple of notes on a napkin. Oh. In the last few months, Steve, we lost Greg Malinowski. And we just recently lost Emmanuel Leva, Sr. And they were both members of my National Guard unit years ago. So, thanks for honoring what you're doing. The, I spent 10 years as northern Arizona Chairman of the ESGR and traveled all over the world, escorting VIPs and visiting with Reserve units from Arizona that was on active duty. And this is all over Europe. We didn't get into Asia, but almost every other place. And, and these are fine people. They're fine citizens. You should be proud they work for the city of Prescott because the one thing they have above, above, beyond all other is integrity, honesty, and knowing how to work. Go to work of a morning and give you a full day's work. So, again, thanks. It's good to be back with you. I'd like to come again someday. I have, today was chemo day. So, and I thank you for waiting till 3 o'clock because it gave me a chance to, to get here. So, Dan, you folks do a super job. Thank you. Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna do this.
He said something about honesty and integrity. Did you follow?
Absolutely. Camera shake hands? Oh, okay.
No, just, just hold it so they can take a picture.
Oh.
You haven't been gone that long. Put your mask on. Go ahead. Remember, I got in trouble last week.
I've been warned by a lot of things by Cindy, but this was not one of them.
Especially if he's getting chemo.
You look good with a mask on, Mayor.
Get it straight over there. Okay. Mayor? I, I should make it known that my son, Pat, is the Vice Chair of the Arizona ESGR. And today, he, what did he do?
Resigned for an hour.
He gave me a job. Today, I'm Vice Chair, and in the morning, Pat will be back on the job as Chair.
Awesome.
Jersey Lily Courthouse Lighting Fundraiser Event.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for giving us this time today to come and talk about our passion for keeping the lights on in Prescott. This year, more than ever, the community needs our support to make the lighting possible. We're excited to have the opportunity to be a part of it and keep the event going. This year is going to look a little different to the, to protect the safety of our participants, committee members, and Jersey Lily Saloon staff. So, this year, our auction and raffle will be offered online from the comfort of your home, which is a plus. Of course, that's at www.thefriendsofjl.com. We'll also have limited occupancy of 76 participants to the event. So, we recommend if you'd like to bid, to show up early. We're going to be doing temperature checks at the door. Food will be served, but not buffet-style. Will be served to you. And then, we're also going to be using the ADHs. Guidelines will be followed, social distancing as well, and masks for the, of course, the employees and also our volunteers, like us and Susan. So, this year, the silent auction will be going online. So, it's online viewing and registration is now open. You can see it now at that website. It's on that piece of paper that you guys all have, somewhere about the third paragraph. The bidding opens on the 2nd and at 5:00, and it closes again on the night. So, we're going to have about a week's time that you can go in and see who's outbid you, go back in and rebid over them. And then, the live auction will be on the 5th of November. That will open, online bidding will open at 4:00, and then, in-person bidding will start at 6:00. So, they'll be able to simultaneously bid online while also in the Jersey Lily with cards. This is all new for us. So, this is, we're like, wow, what are we doing? So, this is going to be very interesting. But I think that with Greg's help, we're going to be doing a great job.
Right.
Yeah. Great auctioneer.
Not sure how we're going to do that, but we'll figure it out.
We're figured out. You're, you're really, really good at it, though. So, we have faith in you. We have raffle tickets, and donor bulbs are still available through the actual raffle date of January 14th. So, anybody that would like to donate that can or would like to be there for that event as well to possibly win the bronze that's about this tall would be great. And then, that is also at the Lights Out Party on the 14th at 6:00. Your support is greatly appreciated, and we're happy to have this opportunity to keep the event going this year and many more years to come. Thank you.
Just, Councilman Blair is going to make my donation for me as well as his own.
You know, I could do that. You got it, okay.
No, go ahead.
Whose name goes on the bulk.
You can come up here and get it, yeah.
Thank you very much.
As always, Gary Edelbrock was not here to harass me about it, but in his memory and for the lighting of the courthouse, he has my $100 bill.
Well, thank you. It's big steps to, shoes to step into to come up here and talk to the council. I've never had this opportunity before. I've done some chamber events and things, but never the council. So, we dearly miss Gary from doing this.
And it's always nice embarrassing the mayor into $100.
Yeah.
It's great. Yeah, it's great.
Well, you did a great job.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or anything? We do have some cards that have, it's a business card size that has the website on it instead of this really large piece of paper. If there's.
Yep. November 5th, is that right? Am I remembering that right?
Live auction.
Yep. November 5th. Yep. Well, I appreciate you guys being here. Thanks to the Jersey Lily, and send our thanks to Josh as well for all you guys do to make sure that the courthouse is lit every Christmas. We really appreciate it.
Really well as it is right now, and we just got to run out and go do some more. We just got one donation. We have some more to do today. So, thank you for your time.
Good.
Nice.
Normally, you guys are raising $30,000, $40,000. Help me remember. 40? Yep. Yep. Very good. Well, thanks again.
$3,000 last year.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Is, are there any items that any members would like to pull from the consent agenda? It is a extensive consent agenda. Councilmember Rusing.
K and M, thank you.
K and, did you say M as in Mary?
M.
K and Mike, Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
K and M.
Okay. Anything else? Any other members? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
May I move to approve the consent agenda excluding items K and M?
Second. Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's look at item K first, please. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I would just like to make a comment. First of all, just let me be clear. I'm not a defunder. I support our police department, and I believe that the rule of law and public safety are essential elements of good governance. But however, I do not support a 600-bed jail being moved to Prescott. And that's why I pulled this consent agenda item because I didn't want to have to vote for the water agreement, Water Service Agreement item as a consent agenda. That would have been a four vote. So, I pulled it because I, so I can vote against it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Good?
Yeah, I also had a concern about approving these agreements at this time. There will be a hearing in Superior Court on November 9th regarding the conditions of the, the site. There's been a claim from a group that is concerned about the contamination, potential contamination there. So, the hearing will be on those merits. Also, yesterday, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality had a webinar.
So, we're just really talking about whether the city's going to provide water to the site. If, if for some reason it doesn't get built, site, if, if for some reason it doesn't get built, then it's kind of a mood issue, but, you know, I think we really just kind of need to focus on the Water Service Agreement itself.
Well, I'm going to continue to make my point. AQMD has decided, and the county has agreed, to do some additional vapor testing on the site over the next 30 to 60 days. We also have an election for county supervisors that will happen next week. There's been a number of candidates who have varying positions on this, and I think the.
And for the record, Mayor, we're off topic now completely.
The need for approving this at, at this time is not particularly necessary, and it can be done in a future timeframe after some of these conditions have been decided. So.
I guess my question would be to staff, has the county, per our process, met all the conditions to, you know, for this water service application that we're talking about?
Mayor Gwen Roig with Public Works, sorry, I can't talk with this on. To answer your question, yes, the applicant has gone through all the steps, they attended a pre-application conference in July, they submitted their applications in September, and they were before the Water Issues Subcommittee on October the 6th. So, the only step left is approval by council or denial by council of their application for water for this facility.
Well, I'm not proposing that we deny it, but I would like to move that we postpone the decision on this approval until after these conditions have been decided.
Yeah, and I guess my, my question, Councilman, would be, I, I don't see anything in those things you've cited in the future that would change the process that they've gone through to apply for water. I, you know, th- those are external events that really have no bearing on a water service application.
Well, if the facility is delayed, or there is some justification for not, not building it at this time based upon some of those conditions, then clearly, the Water Service Agreement would not provide water to a facility that may not be built in the near term.
Yeah, again, you know, I did some research on my own, talked to the county administrator, I have all of the documentation from him right here that can be entered into public record regarding all of the necessary requirements for them to move forward with their project, therefore, you know, for us to provide water. So I, I really don't understand your point on this in terms of waiting.
Well, I think we should wait until the decision has been decided by the Superior Court Judge, the election has been completed, and then, the new board has been, decides how and when the project will move forward.
Mayor Porton?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I, I attended the ADEQ webinar last night, and I was quite satisfied by the answers that the county folks gave to ADEQ and those that had questions. I felt very comfortable, if you're very comfortable with supporting this, and, you know, this is not political, this is whether or not we're going to do a Water Service Agreement, and this should not be dependent upon a particular election. Thank you.
Councilperson Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I don't think that we should ever consider postponing a decision that we make based on the outcome of an election. We are an independent body of, you know, an elected body, and for us to say that we would or wouldn't support something depending upon the outcome of an election for a different body, I think is just not appropriate or in the bounds of what we should be doing. Additionally, I don't think that this Water Service Agreement is an opportunity for us to examine the merits of this project, that's something that the county has done and has decided to move forward with. Lastly, I would say that the county is and has been a significant working partner to the city of Prescott for many, many, many years, and for us to, you know, interject our opinions into their project that they have been moving forward with, crossing the Ts, dotting their Is, I think is just not, not an appropriate use of our partnership in, in a place that we should be, so that's, that's where I stand on, on this Water Service Agreement.
Any other questions, comments from the council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move the approval of Water Service Application Number WS20-006 from Brandon Schultz, representing Yavapai County Facilities.
Order. I already made a motion that we postpone the vote on this until after these decisions had been made, so shouldn't I get at least a vote?
I, I'm sorry, I missed the.
I do, too.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed your motion, my apologies, I did not hear a second.
I second it.
Okay.
So, the, the procedural motion takes precedent, Mayor, so the vote would be on a motion to continue until after, when?
I would say.
After the hearing?
After the hearing would be at least acceptable to me.
All right, that's your motion, and second.
So.
So, it's a procedural motion merely to, to continue this item until sometime after the Superior.
Following the November 9th hearing.
And then, a no vote would mean that we could move ahead?
That's correct. The yes vote is a, 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 a vote to continue, and no vote is a vote not to continue.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Good, my apologies, and a second, so let's please vote.
Fails 2-5.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to, for approval of Water Service Application Number WSA20-006 from Brandon Schultz, representing Yavapai County Facilities for commercial supplies on
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-1.
All right, let's move on to item M. Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you, I would just appreciate an update on this Phase 3B of Granite Dells Estates, it involves 167 residential units and 74.31 acres of open space, and I just wanted to say that there really wasn't a comprehensive map involved, and it was, I was having a hard time reading the print on it, even though I had a magnifying glass. And I would just like to ask, is, where is the open space, and is the open space usable? Are there walking paths? Or is it a green belt, or what's involved? And then, I was going to ask also about if there's any public safety egress or ingress other than just one, one way in and out.
Mr. Mayor? This is a final plot of a portion of Phase 3 of Granite Dells Estates, it's, 3B is actually the center line of the, the area you see. The green areas shown on the map are, in fact, open space tracks, so the subdivision overall has a, a very large amount of, of open space.
Is this it?
Thank you, yes, it's that area plus the area just slightly to the right of that.
Here?
There you go, that.
Okay.
That, yes. So, most of the area is open space, it's actually over 50% in open space, and I have a tally that I'll pull up at the end to answer your question. The properties involved have access off of Granite Dells Parkway, and the roadways are interconnected throughout the subdivision. It's a, it's a planner thing, we like streets to connect to one another, cul-de-sacs are fine if they're relatively short. In this case, there are three cul-de-sacs created by this phase of the subdivision, and each of them are relatively short with no more than 10 houses on any one of those cul-de-sacs. So there's plenty of access throughout the site, and again, a, a lot of access to open space. There are trail opportunities, and trail alignments are something that are worked out during the, the actual final construction phase of the project. Our trails folks from Parks and Recreation meet with the developers, they lay out the trails where they're functional, rather than planning them ahead on paper. That works better in the case of a situation like this, where there's lots of terrain changes, a, a lot of gullies and, and drainages that actually provide very good trail locations.
And then, I just have one question, on the development agreement, which is from 2007, it mentioned the possibility of private streets, are any of these streets private, or are they all public?
Oh, thank you. And the comment from, from Joe Baines, our, our recreation director, is that there will be a comprehensive trail system that interconnects through the open space areas of the subdivision.
Oh, thank you.
In regard to the street connectivity and the private streets, this phase will not be private, most of these streets are not private streets, as far as I'm aware of. Most of the streets within Granite Dells Estates are public streets, there are a couple of exceptions that are private and gated.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, George. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion.
May I move to approve the final plot for Granite Dells Estates Phase 3B?
Second.
Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item 9A, please.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 14 Club Liquor License Application from Robin Jo Allen, applicant for Prescott Center for the Arts, location 208 North Marina Street. The application fee has been paid, the sign has been posted for the required 20 days, and staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
All right.
Know that the applicant is here today.
Oh, yeah.
There she is.
Yeah, come on up for a second, that'd be great. I have noticed that you guys are doing some outdoor concerts, which I think is great, so thanks for doing that. Yeah.
So, it was interesting, because a lot of the theaters have been doing this for about 10 years, you know, bringing in alcohol to help supplement, because as we all know, the ticket itself doesn't cover the expenses, so we have to find other ways, fundraising and that kind of thing, so as, we, it's been on our radar for quite a while. And then, when, of course, the pandemic hit and we had to reduce our capacity to 100, what we did is we socially distanced tables, so now it's a cabaret-style, socially-distanced tables, and, you know, following all of the Yavapai Health and Safety Guidelines, we've created a safe place for people to come and have entertainment, and also to help our restaurants. We're going to be serving small plates, highlighting the different restaurants and the chefs, and really promoting them, all the proceeds go to the restaurant, that's, we're not getting in the restaurant business. However, when we went to buy a liquor license and apply for it, we called one, a broker, and he said, well, I'd like to sell you one, however, you need to look at this over here. And we looked at this option, and what is so cool about it is that we already have members, we have over 700 season-ticket holders alone, and we've never had a really sophisticated system for our historic building. We love it, we want it to be here forever, we want to be the, the person that takes care of it, but it's expensive, and it has been a heavy burden for 50 years. You know, they, it was a great gift, however, this whole challenge of keeping it, you know, alive and breathing and not, you know, turning to dust has been a challenge. We've spent over $100,000 since I've been here for five years, well over $100,000, just in the repairs and upgrades and things like that, so what this will do is that $1 per ticket will go toward the historic preservation of the building, and that to us is exciting. Now, it doesn't get behind the eight ball like it did when, when I started five years ago and said, yes, we need to repair the roof, you know, I mean, it's just been those, those challenges that all of the executive directors for me faced, something that I took on, and now, this has been a gift, and we hope you guys agree.
Well, thank you so much, we appreciate hearing more about PCA, you guys do a great work in our community, we're grateful for you guys, and, and thanks for adapting in the middle of the pandemic and offering the outdoor concerts, it's a great, great deal.
Well, that's going to be part of our new plan now, you know, we did get that $3 million gift, unbelievable miracle, rain down on us, an angel, we have no idea, we have no idea who it is, but anyway, we'll be able to incorporate the Outdoor Amphitheater now into the plans.
Great. Well, thanks for being here, thank you. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license number 120891 for a new Series 14 Club Liquor License for Prescott Center for the Arts, location 208 North Marina Street.
Second. Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item 10A, please.
Approval of PLN 20-002, a preliminary plot for Ridgeview subdivision located at Gateway Boulevard and State Route 69, a 25-lot subdivision.
Thank you, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, Tammy Dewitt, community planner of City of Prescott. The subject property is located on the west side of the mall, off of Gateway Mall Boulevard. It is zoned business regional, which does allow for multifamily or single-family residential lots. This is the imagery of the property to kind of get you oriented, here's Dillard's here, this is Best Buy down here, and as you come up the Gateway Boulevard, you come up to the first big entrance there, and it's on either side of that entrance. This is about 2.92 acres, and they are proposing 25 residential lots, they're going to be patio homes, which are detached townhomes, basically, they're just very small homes on small lots, we're doing this as a planned area development, which allows for the smaller lot sizes and for reduction in setbacks. And this is a close-up of the property question, it's already been bladed and graded for pads. This has given a different option for the mall to bring people to the mall area, and hopefully, to give some life back to that area, is what we're hoping for. So this is the lot layout of what they're proposing, like I said, it's 25 lots, and they do have 32% open space, it's just required, beyond, over what's required for a planned area development. So this is where it's located, you come down Gateway Boulevard, and it's on this side, is one of the views. And this is the other pad up here, then kind of the views from the pad, and like any other way. So there are some amazing views from this area, this is an area that, this is definitely a unique project for this property, and we're very excited to see something like this come forward. The lots do range from 1,713 square feet to 4,910 square feet, there's no plans on what the size of the homes are going to be at this time, but they do have pads with the reduced setbacks to allow for it. Each residence will have a one-car garage, and then, they have their second parking spaces here along the driveway, which goes around the mall, and then, for guest parking, we actually have the parking for the mall, so to be utilized. And then, these are looked at as driveways to the parcels. And then, here's the other side to show you the lot configuration. And so, that concludes my presentation, I'm free to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Tammy. Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you, I just have a question, are, are these units going to be two-story?
They can.
And so, how tall do you think that'll be, two-story?
They don't have plans yet for that, they haven't gotten that far, first, they're going to get through all the plating and the infrastructure, then they'll bring in a, a local builder to design those lots, but they could go up to two-story.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve PLN 20-002, a preliminary plot for Ridgeview.
Second. Have a motion and a second, let's please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item B, please.
Approval of City Contract Number 2008-164A2, an amendment to City Contract Number 2008-164 with Granite Dells Estates Properties, Inc., and Granite Dells Estates Properties II, Inc. for construction cost reimbursements.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Craig Gossack, Public Works. So this item is to consider reimbursement with Granite Dells Estates Properties, Inc., and Granite Dells Estates Properties II, Inc., in accordance with the previous approved City Contract Number 2008-164, the development agreement. So the portion of Granite Dells Parkway that, that we are discussing today, and can't hardly see, so we have the roundabout, that's, I need a pointer. We have the roundabout here at Dell's Ranch Road and Granite Dells Parkway, and then, heading south and then curving to the west, will be the new segment being built down here to Iron Rock, is the portion that we're considering today. being built down here to Iron Rock, is the portion that we're considering today. So, by the existing development agreement, the developer had, has the responsibility, had the responsibility to build Granite Dells Parkway from Granite Dells Parkway Interchange at 89A into the development to Dell's Ranch Road, and also build Dell's Ranch Road and provide the right-of-ways to go with those. So, the development agreement laid out that the developer was to build a three-lane configuration in accordance with or approval with, with the city. So, when we started talking about this new segment south of Dell's Ranch Road, then we started having discussion about what that three-lane configuration would look like. Talked about build right-side three lanes, left-side three lanes, the center, things like that. Everything that we came down to ultimately then includes the future cost associated with widening it further. By the development agreement, if it was required that the roadway needed to be widened to the full segment by December of '22, then it falls into the development's responsibility. With what's out there currently for development, that will not be a requirement by December of '22. So, then ultimately, this obligation, responsibility will fall onto us as the city to finish that roadway widening to the ultimate configuration. As staff, we're reviewing it. We anticipate that that will fall into alignment with the crossing of Granite Creek and the connection over to the Pippin Roundabout from Highway 89. So, that's in the range of a maximum of nine years. So, as we were considering the three-lane configuration, then we were also considering that in the near future, because nine years isn't that far away, in the near future, then it would trigger that widening. At that time, then it would be our responsibility to come in, do that widening project, which would entail taking and removing curb and gutter, adding partial pavement lanes, reinstall curb and gutter, things like that, of a relatively new infrastructure item that should last far more than nine years. So, when we started looking at costs, what if we partnered today on this project? What would it cost us to partner with the developer to build the full three-lane, or the full configuration in lieu of having that, that demand down the road? When we started looking at doing it in, in that new future of, of nine years, then we were looking in the range of a million to a million-two to do that. And we, going through all the estimates, considering what it would cost us today, we came up with it by partnering at $350,000. It could be built to the full configuration today, and ultimately save that, that additional expense and, and the impact on the traveling public at that time, because then we'll, we'll introduce that construction. It will make the roadway safer between now and then as well, as far as usage of it. And then we won't end up with this patchwork of, you know, X number of years old pavement, new pavement, things like that, where we've kind of got some lesson learned right now going on with Willow Creek Road. So, we had some things at the forefront of thinking about future challenges with this. So, our, our recommendation and request today is to partner with the developer for $350,000 to build the full configuration today in lieu of down the road.
Very good, Craig. Who discovered this? Who flagged this and figured out we could save some money here?
We were, we were all sitting there wracking our brains on what to build.
Yeah.
And how it could look the best. And, well, I, I brought it out to spend more now, because, you know, what's, what's the best?
Yeah, it's a great idea. Saves taxpayers a lot of money, and much less impact, as you already mentioned. So, it's great. It's a great pickup. Questions, council? Comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2008-16482.
Second.
Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, let's move on to item C, please.
Public hearing pursuant to ARS 288425B and approval of city contract number 2019-087A1 to extend the existing lease with SkyWest Airlines, Inc. at Prescott Regional Airport.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Can you believe it's been two years since we started initiated air service with SkyWest Airlines? You know, they're operating as United Express. We already made 10,000 this year, you know, in planements. That's 20,000 total passengers. And by year's end, we expect to achieve close to 28,000 total passengers, despite the COVID challenges. So, that says a lot for the airline and the partnership. Because of the great partnership, they did seek and were awarded an essential air service contract extension for an additional three years through, through the U.S. Department of Transportation. And commensurately, they have requested that we extend their lease for an additional three years. So, I'm in front of you today because there is a public hearing that is required per Arizona Revised Statute for the extension of the lease, and then also to approve the contract itself for the extension of this lease for an additional three years.
That's crazy that it's been two years, Rob. I can't believe that. Time flies when you're having fun, no pun intended. Questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero. Mayor, I move to approve city contract 2019-087A1 for a lease extension with SkyWest Airlines until August 30th, 2023.
Second. Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, let's move on to item D, please.
Approval of city contract number 2021-061 with JBT Aerotech in the amount of $456,577.95 for the installation of a new terminal baggage handling system.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jeff Tripp, Airport Operations Superintendent. The terminal baggage handling system is really one of the last large-scale pieces of the overall terminal construction project. We did issue bids in September and received two bids from qualified entities, and we are recommending award of contract to JBT Aerotech for the installation, and for the procurement installation of the inbound and the outbound baggage systems in the terminal. Once the, we receive the notice of substantial completion from the terminal contractors, which we're estimating to be around March 1st, we'll then give the contractor 21 days to install the terminal system. And this will be one of the last major items prior to the terminal opening sometime late March or, or in April, when we get the final determination.
Very good, thank you. Questions, comments from the council?
Mayor Proton?
I just think this is so exciting that we're gonna have one of these at our terminal. It's awesome. I was out there touring it when it was first kind of laid out, and you could see exactly where it was gonna go, and it's just so cool. You guys have done an amazing job, so thank you.
I think Mr. Lamar and I, we're gonna do it with our own little wagon and tractor for half, half the cost.
Like a three-year contract for $175,000.
For this amount of money.
Councilman Good?
Well, I just want to make another statement, that this is just another example of how efficiently and effectively the, the terminal and the capacity, along with the extension of SkyWest Airlines Essential Air Service Contract, just reinforces the fact that this airport and the capacity and the capability of flight in and out of the airport and the rapid expansion of services is assuring our future for the city of Prescott and the surrounding community. When you look at economic development with any significant growth, it either has to have high-speed interstate capacity, it either has to have rail capacity, or it has to have airport capacity. And this is the future of our, our, our city. So, each one of these components just reinforces what a great job our airport director has done, is continuing to do under very challenging conditions. So, I'm pleased to see each one of these steps go forward, and being able to support, support the expansion of air service in the community is so, so important, and I'm just proud to be able to continue to support it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council and public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of city contract number 2021-061.
Second.
Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, the quote today comes from President Abraham Lincoln. "How many legs does a dog have if you call his tail a leg? Four. Saying that a tail is a leg doesn't make it a leg." This meeting is adjourned.